All right, Madam Chair, we are just waiting on Commissioner Phi and Commissioner Trese to rejoin us, but you do have a quorum and we are live, ready to go.
Alrighty, well, so as not to continue extending the day, we're reconvening in the work session for the Washington County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, September 21st. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. Currently, we have Commissioners Roy Rogers, Commissioner Jerry Willie, and Commissioner Pam Trese, and we are expecting Commissioner Nafisa Phi to join us momentarily. We have had a bit of rearrangement of our work session agenda. We have already covered Items 1, 2, and 5. We're going to try to get to Item 4 next, followed Habitat Conservation Plan Presentation within 45 minutes, followed by the Vaccination Update. Item 6, Homeless Encampment Program Update will be rescheduled for a future meeting, perhaps as early as next week. Stay tuned to agendas, and previously, Item 7 had been pulled. So at this juncture, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Angie to then introduce Erin Doyle from our Government Relations Team and Mr. Mark Rasmussen, our external speaker. Thank you again, Mr. Rasmussen, for your patience with us today.
Thanks, Foreski.
Erin, can you provide the introduction? Thank you.
Happy to do so. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I know it's been a long day, and the slideshow looks very intimidating with the number of slides. We promise we will not be going through each one in detail. We will make this a reasonable amount of time for your day. Just to provide a little context of why we're here today, we are here to provide an update. We are not asking for policy direction. This is just, the Board in May had a conversation about a conversation that took place at the Council of Forest Trust Land Counties Meeting, or CFTLC, about a vote that that organization took, in which Washington County is a member, about whether or not to put forward an alternative to the state's proposed Habitat Conservation Plan, or HCP. And the Commission asked, the Commission, Washington County abstained from that vote because we did not have sufficient information. At that May meeting, they had already gone ahead and had the vote, so there's no policy decision to be made today, but they did ask, your Board asked for us to come back with some information, and that's why we're here today. So this is informational. Next slide, please. So, very briefly, this is today's agenda. I'm going to be providing a brief context on the state forest lands that are within Washington County, but then we're going to turn it over to Mark Rasmussen and do a little technical wizardry, and we will be going through the bulk of his slides really quickly as he gets into the details about the state HCP, current harvest levels, and the alternate that was requested for, by the CFTLC to the federal government, and what that whole process looks like. And then I'm going to give you a brief reminder of actions the county has taken relative to the Habitat Conservation Plan and Forest Trust Lands within Washington County. Next slide, please. So just really quickly, this is a map, woo, very technical stuff I'm giving you. The green area is the Forest Trust Lands that sit within Washington County. They are part of the, mostly in the Tillamook Forest. They are all tax-free because they're owned by the state. They were handed over in a deal in the early nineteen, late, early 1900s, wow, you think I'd remember that by now, where they had been privately owned, but then were all abandoned, and instead of requiring each county to manage each state forest, many counties opted to transfer them over and put them in trust with the state. So we have about just over 45,000 acres within Forest Trust Lands. Next slide, please. From that deal that was struck with the state, when timber is harvested off these lands, we get payments from those harvests. And this is a look back from the last 10 fiscal years before this, the last 10 fiscal years approximately, of how much Washington County was brought in in total revenue from the Trust Lands agreements and the timber harvest sales. We don't get all the money. We do share it per an agreement with other taxing districts that are also foregoing property taxes because they're owned by the states. This is just a list of the other taxing districts that receive some of the revenues out of the timber sale agreements that we have with the state. Next slide, please. We're going to switch it over to Mark to go into detail, and I believe we're going to switch so that he has control of the slides, can provide better directions. Mark, if you want to share?
All right, I'm trying to make sure I have the right one here. Yeah, okay. And, oh, here we go. So you can see my PowerPoint, and I'm not going to do the full display. I have, I made a lot of slides here, thinking that I would give you a pretty comprehensive primer on the state Forest Trust Lands and what's happened there over the last many years, but I've promised to be done here by about 3:30 so that you will have time to ask questions. And, Erin, would you give me a nod at, or a shout out at 3:25? So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna scroll through here and touch on some of these. We're going to talk today mostly about the Habitat Conservation Plan, and I'll just tell you, a Habitat Conservation Plan is a formal contract with the federal agencies, Fish and Wildlife Service and NOAA Fisheries, that binds ODF as land manager to an agreement where they promise to manage the land in a certain way, and from the federal agency standpoint, that that's a benefit to the threatened endangered species. And in return, the federal agencies promise not to prosecute the landowner for any incidental take of protected species while they're managing under this plan. So it protects ODF, and it also gets them out of the task of trying to determine whether or not there's a spotted owl, marbled murelet, or other species affected by each management action that they need to do. Now, let me set the stage a little bit. I think it's important to understand how this fits into the history of things. If you were a county commissioner back in the 80s, and you were looking at these lands, they were younger, and they were maturing, and you would be looking at forest plans that said that sometime in around 2000, the state would be able to harvest about 375 million board feet a year from these lands. As that approached, as that time began to approach, the state went through some rule makings and plans, and offered a plan to harvest about 289 million board feet, and they approved that plan in the year 2000. The next year, the district foresters said, okay, now we have to implement that plan, and we think we, under the plan that was written, we can only get about 149 million board feet of harvest. So there was a big gap, and that led to what's now been 20 years of controversy, and planning, and replanning, and replanning again. The Habitat Conservation Plan is, this line right here, I'll show you in a minute, though, there's been a couple versions of that, but which, these gray bars is what's actually been harvested year by year over this time. And then this is what was proposed in the first version of the Habitat Conservation Plan, starting out about where we are now, and then declining steadily for a while, and then increasing again. Okay, so you could see that that's, in a way, quite, it's about what was being done now, which is much less than what was anticipated in the past. That's the point of that. The Habitat Conservation Plan establishes habitat conservation areas and riparian conservation areas, about 313,000 acres out of about 638,000 acres. In these acres, timber harvest will be incidental at best. There will be a little bit of harvest in there where they think they can improve the stands for the protected species, but generally, timber harvest won't be scheduled in those acres. That leaves you with about 290,000 acres, or 46% of the forest, that can be used for generating revenue from these lands. Here's a picture of what these habitat conservation areas look like. The state land here is pink if it's available for harvest, and green if it's in the habitat conservation areas. And if you peer closely at your version, you can see the riparian conservation areas along each stream. Here in, here's, here's your lands here in Washington County, so you can see how that looks. The reason for a habitat, the need for a Habitat Conservation Plan is that as the acres began to age into maturity, somewhere around age 40 to 50 to 60, the state had a different plan in mind where they were going, they had for many years managed this forest in a way where they weren't clearcutting, they were simply thinning with an idea of accelerating the development of complex habitat. That meant a lot of acres were growing into this age class, age 60, 70, and 80, which begins to become attractive to owls, and to some extent, murelets. And so what that meant was, all of a sudden, the state has a lot of acres which might be encumbered by owls and murelets, and therefore not available for harvest. So they decided to enter into a Habitat Conservation Plan to allow them to harvest some of these acres. The green acres are what would be, where harvest would be available, and the red is the habitat conservation areas and the riparian conservation areas. Now, I have a whole bunch of slides here about the cost and the value of these acres, and how it's distributed between counties and all that. And I will, in the interest of time, I won't go over that. I also show you some interesting result of the modeling where the harvest levels jumped up and down county by county. The state didn't try to smooth that out by county. Last year, when they were doing this modeling, in this year's modeling, we're working with them to smooth that out, so we'll take that issue away. One, one result of this habitat conservation is that ODF projected in their analysis last year, that, that under this habitat conservation program, they would plan, they would lose, they would start off losing about $12 million a year, and end up losing about $24 million a year. Now, this is, this is problematic because ODF is self-supported, supported by the revenues. When timber is harvested, the counties and taxing districts get about 2/3 of that revenue, and the Department of Forestry gets 1/3 of the revenue as their management fee. And what they showed was that because harvest is going to be declining, and because they, their budget will be going up, they'll be losing money. So this is a problem with this. Let me jump to this slide now. This is a slide of the schedule for this project, and it's very complicated. The state is simultaneously working on a Habitat Conservation Plan and the NEPA documentation that goes with that, a Forest Management Plan to implement the forest, the Habitat Conservation Plan. There's a carbon plan that recently came out, and they're trying to work that into it. And what they don't show you here is the implementation plan, which shows how they'll actually do the management under the Forest Management Plan. And so they're working on several different lines all at once, and it, and this schedule gets more and more complicated every time we look at it. And there's, if it really works out this way, everyone will be amazed. Now, what I wanted to show you here is the NEPA analysis. The NEPA analysis is conducted by Fish and Wildlife Service and NOAA Fisheries. That's their duty. And so what's happened now is that last, last October, the Board said, go ahead with this draft Habitat Conservation Plan you put out. The ODF worked on it some more, and in January or February, they sent that over to Fish and Wildlife Service and said, here's the draft we want you to use as the basis for your NEPA analysis. Fish and Wildlife Service put together a scoping notice, which is required under NEPA, and said, if you have any comments, we're going to start our NEPA work on this HCP. If you have any comments, anything that we should consider, any new information that you think we don't have, please send it now. And that's the context for the, the alternative that CFTLC sent in on the HCP. So let me talk a little bit more about this. It was named the CFTLC's Three-Goal Alternative, and it recognizes that first, the HCP presented by ODF has some major problems. The first is, as I mentioned, this big deficit in ODF budget. It just doesn't make ODF financially viable. There's a decline in harvest from the current level of about 250 million board feet to somewhere around 200 million board feet a year. That means revenues to the, revenues to the counties will be down about $13 million. And while the, the HCP documentation that ODF put together didn't look at jobs and economic impacts, it's easy enough to figure out what those might be. A significant number of jobs in the rural economies dependent that uses timber. Now, the other thing that we noticed as we looked at this was that the HCP never makes a projection about what will happen to the population of the protected species under this plan. It simply tells us what will happen to the habitat, the suitable habitat, but not the populations. And, and that seems to us to be a, an oversight, especially with respect to spotted owls. If we look at, I have two graphs here. This graph shows the population of barred owls that are found in spotted owl habitats. Back, back in 1994, when the feds adopted the Northwest Forest Plan, there were some barred owls around, but not very many. You know, maybe 20 or 25% of the spotted owl habitats had barred owls in them. And, but now, almost all the spotted owl habitats have barred owls in them. And during that same time, in spite of all the land that the, that the federal agency set aside for, for, to protect the spotted owl, the population of the spotted owl has been declining during this time. Fish and Wildlife Service did a study that started in 2016. Out on the coast range, they had a certain number of spotted owl habitats, and they split them in two groups, and they show you the historical decline in these groups, these two groups. And in this, in this group of habitats that are in the red, they removed barred owls. They shot barred owls. And you can see what happened was that where they didn't do that, the populations continued to decline. Where they did do that, the population stabilized. They repeated this experiment over on the, in the Klamath area and up in Washington, and see the same thing. So, so today, the spotted owl biologists and others say, look, we're not really going to recover the spotted owl without controlling the barred owl. And that's what, and, and the biologists are coming to that conclusion. But now, the HCP originally had a little bit of discussion about, well, maybe we'll do some barred owl control if we get some money, and if it seems like the right thing to do. In the latest draft, after we made the proposal for the county alternative, that, that was strengthened. But, but our, the alternative set forth by the counties says that we should commit to long-term and aggressive control of the predators, and, and that will have a huge impact on the population. And, and, and in fact, we'll be able to, we believe that we will be able to produce more owls than this, than the state would with setting aside the habitat without much owl control, I'm sorry, barred owl control. And so the county's alternative is to trade off some of the acres set aside in the HCAs for more aggressive and, and a constant commitment to barred owl control. The same dynamics works to a lesser extent for marbled murelets. Murelets are preyed upon by corvids, and, and there are some things that can be done to control those, that corvid predation. So, CFTLC asked the Board of Forestry to, ask the federal agencies to evaluate this outcome, and to, to make sure that, that in terms of evaluating the HCP, that they, they do not focus solely on the number of acres of habitat, but also do some modeling of the populations. The BLM did that in their forest plan several years ago. So it's something that can be done, and ought to be done, to help evaluate the effectiveness of the HCP. And here's the specifics of that. I could read through all that if you want, but you have it in front of you. So, look, I've done this in four minutes shorter than I thought I might, and I'm happy to go back and read through all those other slides if you want, or we can talk about it, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Before we get to that, let me close out the last slide from the original presentation.
Okay, I'll stop my sharing.
Yeah, thank you. So this is not the first time the, this Board, or the Washington County Board, in the past, has talked about the policies around the Forest Trust Lands. So I apologize for a formatting error that I did not catch when I made this slide. Written in black, in the black bar at the top, it says that the county entered into a resolution and order 2013-027, which was a statement in 2013 by the Board at that time, that supported the three purposes of the forest as habitat, harvest, and recreation, and also noting the importance of clean water, using the forest lands that we use to help us with our watersheds. In 2020, as the conversation around the Habitat Conservation Plan was coming to fruition, the Department of Forestry's State Forester Liz Dent came and provided a presentation to the Board. And after that presentation, this Board on July 28th submitted a letter to the Board of Forestry confirming the commitment that was expressed in 2013 in that resolution and order to a greatest permanent value supporting harvest, habitat, and recreational uses of the forest. And then as the Board of Forestry, which is the Board in this instance, not your Board that was finalizing the HCP, the Board, your Board, asked me to provide a letter that, to the Board of Forestry, and then provide testimony at the hearing related to whether or not the state should move forward with requesting a habitat, approval of the Habitat Conservation Plan and entering into that NEPA process that Mark mentioned. And that letter was submitted, and the testimony was provided on October 1st of 2020, not 2021. I apologize for that error. So that, that support rested on the need for the long-term assurance of how timber harvest would proceed, given the number of environmental concerns that have held up a number of the timber sales from moving forward, so that there would be long-term assurances for purposes of timber harvest, but also for the recreation and habitat efforts that this Board has continued, this Board supported back in their July letter. So with that, a little bit of information about where the Board has been on the Habitat Conservation Plan, I will also say, we've never gotten into the technical details because we don't have internal staff that has sufficient knowledge and expertise in the area of forest management. We don't have a forester on staff. I do my best, but we stick to higher-level policy. So with that, I'll move us to the final slide and ask Chair Harrington to take back over, and find out what Board the question, what questions the Board might have.
So, just to make sure we're all clear, so the CFTLC Council was able to take their vote and move with the abstention from Washington County, and make this proposal to the Board of Forestry. So, so our abstaining by virtue of not having the opportunity for us to review the information and discuss did not impact their forward momentum in, at all. So, but this is the follow-up, and I appreciate Commissioner Willie following up so that we have the benefit of the information. So at this juncture, Commissioners, I would just pause to see if any of you have any questions. Go ahead, Commissioner Trese.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Rasmussen and Ms. Doyle, for the presentation. Could, could you go back to the previous slide? I need to open my, about the, I think it would be on page 37?
I think it's the one before this.
Okay, well, we, you talked about the three goals being timber management, recreation, and, oh, my mind.
It's Slide 38.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Are you speaking to the Washington County? Three goals, it's habitat, harvest, habitat, harvest, and recreation.
And did we ever, I don't remember ever looking at climate as, or climate change as a piece of that as well. And am I correct on that, other than?
That is correct. We have, it's not been part of, an explicit part of the discussion.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I hadn't missed something. Thank you.
You're on the journey. You're remembering that we had our first-ever Board conversation about climate change and climate adaptation at our July 22nd, 2021 meeting, and we're supposed to follow on that in future roundtables. So, but, you know, we've got a lot on our plate. So, do any other Commissioners have questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Thank you. And if you could take down the slide presentation so I could just see everybody on the screen, that would be good. And again, thank you, Mark and Erin, for being a little flexible today. We moved you for a couple hours, and you stayed with us, so thank you for that. There's, as I go through this learning process, being on the Council of Forest Trust Lands, and the California, Oregon, or Oregon, California, these, these Boards and Commissions all have some nuances that require me to, to really get educated on forests, and certainly the Habitat Conservation Plan. So, the driving force is the greatest permanent value. So I have pulled up the definition from the Oregon Department of Forestry of Rule 629, blah, 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 greatest permanent value, and I've looked at that. I hear conversations about the balance of how many million board feet we should allow harvested each year versus how many years we should designate as a habitat-protected area. And obviously, that debate continues. I hear about the spotted owl, and the predators of the spotted owl being, I thought it was the marble muret, or whatever it is, but it isn't. It's the, it's the other owl. So with all of that, it's it's finding the balance. So my first question isn't necessarily related to this, but I happened to drive, uh, to Bend, uh, through the Sandy M Fire. And there's been a couple of them over the last 10 or 15 years. And I also went to Douglas County and, uh, saw their fire from a year ago. And the contrast between BLM managed lands and privately managed lands. And in the privately managed lands, they allowed for the cutting of the burned trees. Whereas the BLM land, and, and correct me, Mark, please, if I'm getting these, this ownership thing wrong, the BLM lands don't allow harvesting of these trees. So they stay upright and basically, uh, presumably, uh, homes for our birds and insects and all those kinds of things, which I think is still up to debate as well. But anyway.
Let, let, let me just say that the BLM Forest Plan divides their land base into two pools. There's the harvest land base and then there's the land base that doesn't contribute to harvest. The BLM's intent is to salvage as much timber as it can from the harvest land base, which I think is, uh, less than half of, of, uh, their acres are in the harvest land base. I forget the number exactly, but they, they will cut, they will cut some timber, salvage some timber from those burned acres that are in the harvest land base.
Okay, so, just sticking with, uh, the Sandy M Fire, uh, you can see where they have focused on so many feet away from the roadway. They have, uh, cut those trees down, but anything beyond that, they have not. So what, what's the mindset of, why couldn't we selectively harvest some of that burned timber and offset some of the demands of the forestry plan, uh, that obviously the, uh, production of, uh, wood or the production of lumber availability, um, to mitigate those two? Why, why couldn't we do that? Is there some policy or some rule or some philosophy that doesn't work?
Uh, on the private lands that were burned, uh, most of that timber is being harvested and, and will be harvested, um, by the end of this, of this season. And, and the reason that the private landowners were so quick on it is because, uh, a, as the timber starts to age, as, as the burnt timber begins to age, it checks and it stains and it gets bug holes in it and, and it becomes worthless. The, 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 the public agencies to one extent or another have different salvage priorities. Uh, I mentioned the BLM intends to ha- harvest on about half the lands that burned. The, uh, state had some lands that burned and they were pretty aggressive about setting up the salvage, logging on that. The federal, uh, the, the Forest Service lands, um, are, uh, the Forest Service really intends just to harvest the trees that are a hazard along the road, the roadways. They don't have any extra people, any extra money to go chasing the salvage. Behind, in each of, each of those agencies is also facing lawsuits from people who don't want that harvest to occur. And, and so they have to negotiate that, you know? Do they want to spend their time and money defending a lawsuit, uh, while the timber is deteriorating? So the, the Forest Service has pulled back some of its intended salvage just because they didn't want to fight the lawsuit. What you see along the roadway, that's a, that's a separate effort from ODOT to try to remove hazard trees, uh, that, that are in the right of way. That, they don't want those trees falling on the pavement and creating a hazard for travelers. And, and that, and, and so they're, they're, they're spearheading that salvage effort, uh, regardless of ownership. They're, they're out identifying which of those trees in the right of way are hazardous and they're removing those. So it's very complicated, right?
Well, it is, and, and I certainly get that. I just, again, if we're looking big picture and we're saying, okay, the, the pushback on both sides is how much of our forests are going to be available for harvest versus how much are going to be protected for habitat.
Yep.
And it would seem to me that there should be some flex in there that says, we've had a forest fire go through this, uh, burned, I mean, in the Sandy M case, it was amazing how many miles that I drove, uh, a burned forest. And why couldn't we offset some of the quota?
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, with the burned trees and say, okay, now we get to, uh, allocate a little bit more to the habitat conservation aspect of it. And I, and I don't understand why we can't blend those three pieces together and come to a happy place or at least closer. So am I completely, is a forest land, is a burned land off, off the discussion table? Is that just?
Well, within the context of the State Forest Trust Lands, um, there has been a discussion because of this fire, what should the HCP allow for, uh, salvage? If, if you get a fire in some of these, um, habitat conservation areas or right pairing conservation areas, should you be able to harvest that or not? That's a very good question, isn't it? It, it's exactly the, the question you're asking. And, and if, if some of that land burns up, should you look outside those established habit, habitat conservation areas and, and trade off some acres that were burned for some acres that weren't burned? So that, that, that question is now in play because the, the fire, you know, the idea of fire has become very real to us since last year, hasn't it?
Yeah.
And so that, that discussion is ongoing.
Okay. Well, I would, and, and the reason why, this is to the Commission, my commit, fellow Commissioners, is the reason why I brought this forward is because obviously this is a very complex and current issue that, uh, that certainly, um, I'm working through. Well, I'm not working through, I'm sitting and I'm listening to the education and the debate about, um, the, the three-goal HCP alternatives that was presented by the Council of Forest Trust Lands. Um, the, and then of course the timeline and everything else of the Forest Management Plan. And it is, it is very complex. We're looking at over, this is a 70-year thing. This is kind of like when we were doing the urban growth boundary and we had to look out 50 years and how difficult that was. And now we're looking at a Forest Management Plan that's got 70-year horizon on it. And so lots and lots of pieces to this. And so I just wanted to let the, bring the Commission up to speed as to, um, what, what impact it has on Washington County, which, uh, I don't believe is significant. I mean, obviously if it's a million here or a million there, but it's not big dollars, um, in the big picture, but it's still of value and we need to be protecting our forests. Uh, but we do have at least two lumber mills in, um, in Western Washington County that we need to be, uh, sensitive to, uh, what their perspective is on this. And so I'll be meeting with them over the next month or so and getting that information. So anyway, that's the reason why I asked this presentation to be made. So I'll be quiet.
Are there any other Commissioner questions or comments? Commissioner Rogers, go ahead.
Two quick things, uh, well, maybe not so quick. Jerry, thanks, thanks for your involvement in that. I, I've, I've never been involved in that particular committee, but I know Dick was involved for you and you certainly have a, a lot, uh, to understand and to deal with on that group. So I, I appreciate your efforts very much. And maybe you can answer this, or maybe Mark more appropriately. Wha- what's happened is, is I've experienced this over time, is that you have different parts of the state with very, very different attitudes on how things get done and very, very different attitudes on how property should be used. And as the metropolitan area has expanded in size and, and growth rate, they, they, they have no real apparent need other than some rural areas in Washington County, but most of it, they don't farm, they don't, uh, cut trees. I mean, the economy in Oregon is certainly not based principally on that anymore. So things have changed a lot. And when you talk with the, with the timber folks, I mean, they have a very different perspective. So I've always wondered why we have to have this forced partnership. And I understand the lands were achieved through condemnation and I understand how it all occurred, but, uh, why couldn't this split up? I mean, partnerships don't last forever, uh, in this, different groups. And so their harvest issue would be not something that everybody's fighting about. Our recreational use would not be something that would be contested. Uh, why does it have to be solidified or is that simply inactively, uh, of the, I guess Oregon Legislature to do something or act by Congress? What would, what would a change have to take? How, how would a change occur? How, how could they do that?
You're asking, um...
Though that, that is way off the topic of this Habitat Conservation Plan and these three alternatives, uh, and goes to the question of the arrangement between the counties with CFTLC as convened by AOC and the relationship with the state. Which is way outside of the topic.
Let, let me just say then, and I abstain from any vote. I, I have clients involved in this, I understand their perspective. And so I'll, I'll abstain, not say anything, and you vote all accordingly.
Yep, you're, well, we're not asking for any policy direction today.
That's where we're headed.
We recognize your abstention, uh, as you also abstained from the, uh, lawsuit direction that the Board gave because of those same circumstances. So not a problem. So Commissioner Phi, you haven't had a chance to ask any questions? Not that you have any, okay. So none for today. So, uh, I'll wrap things up then. Uh, so this topic, the alternative, uh, HCP, uh, or three alternatives, uh, information as it had been labeled, came to us as a result of it going to the, uh, Council of Forest Trust Lands and us not having the opportunity of seeing the three-goals information prior to their making a decision and then presenting it to the Board of Forestry. I'm glad that they were able to move ahead. Uh, with, with the multiple presentations that I've seen in parts of the, uh, Oregon, uh, the Board of Forestry meetings as well as, uh, CFTLC meetings that I've been able to make, and it isn't a lot, but I don't see how the, this three-goals alternative has gone through, uh, it's gone through a process to form the proposal, but I don't think it's gone through a public process for any sort of rigor understanding and questioning like the HCP. It is, to be clear, it is not saying replace the HCP. It is an alternative to approaches of that. Um, I stand by our position as we confirmed, uh, in July of 2020. And, uh, complicated though it may be, through the NEPA process, uh, and the, the multi-tier process of the Forest Management Plan, uh, I, I stand by that process and we'll see how it goes. Um, so those are, are the comments that I would, uh, leave with for today. Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, just one last comment too. You know, uh, again, we focused on the greatest permanent value. That is one of the, the key underlying, um, um, policies of this plan. And I certainly don't see anything in that that I would have an issue with. Um, but it does allow for, um, sustainable and predictable production of forest products that generate revenues for the benefit of the state, counties and local taxing districts. And I think therein lies the problem is, what is that balance? We can all say, we're going to hang on to the greatest permanent value and that's not a problem, but we have to find some way of, of resolving what that balance is and what that looks like to, to sustain that policy. So that's always been, when, when Catherine reminded me of that, uh, several months ago, that's why I've done some homework on what exactly all of that means. And so that, I'm going to stay with that. I, I like it. I think it's best, but what exact, how, what does that look like when we get all said and done?
Yep, and I just stand by, uh, trying to maximize timber harvest and revenue, uh, maximization is a bit counter to that. So that's all. So the debate continues. All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Rasmussen, for joining us today and, uh, Erin, for continuing to do your best to help guide us through, uh, the complicated journey that is, uh, state forest management as opposed to BLM land and federal land forest management practices as we have a percent of ownership. So.
Thank you, Bert.
Thank you for inviting me. I'll sign off now.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
All right, so next we'll move on to hopefully our final topic of today's meeting, uh, I know I'm not doing the presentation, so somebody chime in.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington. Um, I, I think I'm going to kick us off with some information, um, about just an update on COVID real quick. Um, and these are some, a few separate slides that, um, I put together, um, to make sure that we're answering the questions you had this morning or hopefully to answer the questions from this morning. So, uh, and then, uh, we'll switch over to the, um, vaccine, um, mandate discussion. So next slide, please. There we go. Okay, so, um, this, you guys are all very familiar with these EPI charts, um, by now, and this is showing an EPI chart, um, really from August and September. And you can see that our cases in this surge, um, were the second highest we've experienced during the pandemic. Um, in the last several days, um, we have continued to see triple-digit counts every day, um, which remained similar to, um, August. We've seen some, some higher days in August, but, um, we've definitely been continuing to see cases in the triple digits. What I will say is that the, the last few days, the 15th, 16th, um, tho- those, um, numbers may get a little bit higher over time because remember it takes a few days for, um, the, the reports, um, to get inputted into the system. So we know that data from, uh, not from September 16th forward are incomplete. Sure.
Yes. These numbers seem much lower than the county case numbers that come in through the OHA daily email. I haven't seen any numbers in the 90s for us. They've all been consistently over 100. What gives?
So, um, there, there's, sometimes there's a delay in, that's what I was saying, is the last several days, this, from the 16th forward, um, for sure, those numbers may be a little bit low because we may, um, get more laps reported. So, um, this, this was the numbers we've actually received, um, thus far. And some of what you're seeing is, um, at times mul- multiple days of reporting. So, um, that could also be what's going on is that sometimes they're combining multiple days because, um, they're, they're not counting, um, on Sundays in particular.
Yeah, I get that. So for example, there was a recent three-day count that was 313.
Yes.
That doesn't equate to numbers of 92 and 94. So it's just, I, you know, I don't know why we're looking at different databases and presenting different databases of numbers. That's all. It's just too bloody confusing for the public.
Yeah, this is, these are the latest numbers that we have, um, at the department as of today. So, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry if it's confusing. There are, if you, if you look at the yellow... So, yeah, I'm I'm sorry if it's confusing. There are, if you if you look at the yellow. Um, there's, um, presumptive cases in yellow. Um, so maybe that's part of what we're. How we're confusing, being confusing with this chart. But I I think what, you know, the the big picture is, is that we continue to see, um, triple-digit cases. Um, unless you look at the last couple of days and we're waiting to see if that catches up. We can go to the next slide. So this is, um, hospitalizations by day and, um, the healthcare system is, does continue to be overburdened. Um, and our hospitalizations in this surge, it was also the second. Highest, um, hospitalization surge that we've experienced since the beginning of the pandemic. Um, but the good news is, um, as you've been beginning to hear. Is that we are starting to see evidence of a decline in hospitalization counts and you can see this as well. In that chart that we were ranging eight to eleven and now it's, um, seems to be three to six. Um, hospitalizations over the last few days. Next slide. So this is the, um, OHSU modeling and, um, there the modeling, um, continues to suggest. That we may be at the peak of the hospitalization surge. And if our transmission rates remain as we've seen. Um, then we should see a decline in overall burden of COVID nineteen within our community. Um, and this is really looking at statewide burden, um, by, um, October. Oh, and Eva's there too. So I didn't notice that Eva was on. So if you had anything to say about the case numbers, um. Feel free to, you know, add add anything. I didn't notice that you were there. So. Did you, do you have anything to add or I don't want to put you on the spot? No, no.
No, I think you covered it, Marnie. Um, there's just a delay oftentimes between the lab report and. And the time that the interview is conducted.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, next slide. So, um, over the next six months, um, and this is the the regional public health, um, leadership. Sort of looking at their crystal ball, um, and thinking about, um, what we anticipate over the next six months. So we do anticipate based on the modeling and, um, what we're beginning to see in the data is that the Delta surge will slow. Um, there are no other major variants on the horizon. And, um, as you all know, we're hearing a lot about, um, vaccine approvals for younger children. Um, and we anticipate that those will be, um, FDA approved, um, soon. And then, uh, boosters have been approved for, um, older adults and people with, um. High at high risk for, um, COVID complications. So people with immune, um, system disorders. And then, um, we do anticipate between COVID and normal. Um, normal, um, hospital issues that the hospitals will continue to struggle through the fall and winter. Because we'll be, um, unfortunately, it's likely that we'll be adding influenza. Um, hospitalizations, um, to our COVID. So it's also a good, uh. Opportunity for me to also, um, really advocate strongly that people should also, um, get their influenza vaccination. Um, because although it's not as deadly as COVID, it is certainly can be deadly for. People, especially people with immune compromise, older people and, um, young children. So. Get your COVID vaccine and your influenza vaccine. And then, um, we we definitely know that, um, public health support will be continued. Um, a continued need at a high level, um, because of cases, isolation and quarantine. And now we're going to be layering on lots of new, um, vaccination populations. So the booster population and the younger population that will be working with our community to support. And, um, if we if we look out nine months from now. Um, if we continue to see a decline in cases. If we continue to get folks vaccinated, then there is some reason to be optimistic about the nine month. In the twelve-month horizon. So, um, let's stay the course. Let's get people vaccinated. Let's use our masks so that we can be optimistic in the nine-month, um, horizon. And with that, next slide, I think we're ready to, um. Unless there's questions about the the data, we can move to the actual vaccination, um, mandate conversation. I'm not seeing any hands up. Okay.
Commissioners, commissioners, I just want to make sure that you, uh, that. You have internalized slide five, uh, the that six-month outlook. Uh, you know, just a couple of weeks ago, I was hoping that, uh, the fall would look a little better. Uh, but it's going to take a while for this surge to dissipate and then. Like it or not, Catherine, hello, we're into the flu season. Uh, as well as reminding myself that while the hospitals were just totally slammed. Uh, in late July, August, and now through September. Uh, slammed by COVID cases, there were a lot of surgeries that have been postponed. That involve hospitals and workers and ICUs and all of that. So. That the compounding effect is very real, uh, as Marnie described. Uh, I'm hoping, Marnie, that there aren't, other than COVID, that there aren't other things. Uh, that we've had on the agenda for your public health team to consider over these next six months. Because I'm all for full, I would recommend that our board continue to support you. Your organization and the science, just as we have been over these last eighteen months. And continue to provide our full support so that you can meet the needs of our community. Is there anything that we need to be conscious of taking off of your plate or not? Asking you to add to your plate over these six months?
Uh, thank you, Chair Harrington. I I just think that, uh. Public health and Health and Human Services in general really appreciates the board's support. Um, and the fact that you do, um, pay attention to the science. Um, and that, I mean, that just makes our jobs, um, uh, doable. And, um, we're getting through this together with your support. So we we really appreciate it.
Okie doke. Thank you. Let's keep keep moving on then. It doesn't look like there's any other questions or comments. It looked like Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, I was just, um, Marnie, you you referred to, um, pretty soon we're going to be able to have the. Twelve-year-old and underpopulation vaccinated. When we talk about the percentage of, um, Washington County residents that are vaccinated. Uh, does it include, does that percentage of unvaccinated, does that include twelve-year-olds or is that just of all adults that are eligible?
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. The the eighty percent is adults.
Okay, so the vaccination of the twelve-year-olds and under is not going to impact our eighty percent number necessarily. So, okay.
Yeah.
It's still going to be an important segment of our population to get vaccinated. So, um, I'm excited to see that.
Yeah, extremely important, especially as we are going back to school. Um, the the timing, um, could have been better if it was six months earlier, but, uh. It it's, it it will really help support, um, getting kids back in school and keeping kids healthy and safe in school.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Related to that, the provision for the kids that's been in place for, I think it's just the Pfizer. Use for age twelve and above. Uh. That's under emergency authorization, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so then we're going to move into the, uh, conversation about vaccine mandates. And, um, I'm going to just kick us off with, um, a little bit of information. We can go to the next slide. There's, there's been a lot of, um, questions about why people, um, may not choose to be vaccinated. And so, um, we looked at the the literature and we have been having conversations with our COVID, um, Equity Advisory. Um, committee for, which is a community, um, driven community or, excuse me, a community committee. Um, we also have a statewide, um, uh, Latinx Advisory Committee as well as a metro area Black Leadership Committee. And so this this information is really coming from all of that. So looking at what CDC studies have said. Around vaccine hesitancy and looking at what we're hearing from these different advisory committees. And just our community in general. So, um, it's it's really a lot of misinformation. Um, misinformation can be anything from who's eligible. To what ingredients are in the vaccine itself, to how is adverse event reporting happening? And are we not reporting, um, certain things? Um, is it only, um, certain physicians that report things? So just a misunderstanding about. Potential, um, side effects or problems with the vaccine that are under-reported. Um, there are people who just have concerns about safety. Um, they feel that the vaccines haven't been on the market long enough. They haven't been studied long enough. Um, and then there's some people that just don't like needles. Um, they're, uh, whether it's they're afraid of needles. Um, or it could even be people in recovery who are triggered by, um, needles. There's a group of people that just feel that it's unnecessary, that they're healthy and they're young and their immune systems work well and they don't need the vaccine. Inconvenient, they don't have time, there's other priorities. And I think, you know, it's easy to understand. Um, a lot of our families and community members are really struggling. And so even though we're doing everything we can to make it as simple and accessible. Um, and free as possible, it it's sometimes it's hard when you're just juggling so many priorities in your life. There's also, um, mistrust of the health system, research and government. Historic and ongoing racism and discrimination that contributes to vaccine hesitancy. And that's a lot of the work that we've been doing with our, um, COVID Equity Advisory Committee, the Black Leadership, um. Metro Area Committee and the Latinx, um, Statewide Committee is really to help us to overcome. Some of that hesitancy that's really just related to these historic and ongoing. Um, racism and discrimination and mistrust of government research medical system. Um, there's a group that it's just really about self-determination, um, that's that kind of you can't tell me what to do. Um, attitude. And so it's really digging in the hills. Um, really related to nothing more than self-determination. It's my decision. It's my body. It's my decision. There's political and individual rights, um, versus the role of government. There's, um, again, the belief in natural immunity. Um, people believe that, um, they're going to get better. Um, natural immunity from actually getting infected with the COVID nineteen. Or if they were infected, they feel that they're, um, immune and don't need the vaccine. Some people are looking for full FDA approval. Uh, preference for, uh, non-pharmacologic methods like the distancing supplements and, um, masking. And then there's also some financial concerns associated with if I have an adverse reaction and I can't get to work. So those are some of the, um, most common, um, reasons that we are kind of bumping up against, um. Around hesitancy. And the next slide is really what I'm calling my Mythbusters Slide. Because these are also things that we have heard and the COVID vaccines absolutely do not contain. Microchips. They do not alter your DNA. They do not make you magnetic. Um, they do not cause pregnancy or fertility problems. There is nothing in the vaccine that shed or released outside of the body that could infect or harm other people. In your household or in the community. They do not cause you to test positive for COVID nineteen. And they do not infect you with the virus. There is no virus used in manufacturing, um, the vaccine. And the vaccine does not contain any aborted fetal cells or fetal tissue. Uh, and those are all, um, again, reasons that we have heard from people. Um, in our community and nationally for not wanting to get the vaccine. So I just wanted to. Put that out there that these are myths and they are absolutely not true. And, um, you can go to the website, the CDC website and, um. Find more information about some of these myths and, um. The the scientific information that supports that these are are not accurate. And with that, um, I am going to turn it over to Eva Labonte, um, to talk about the employee, um. Survey results.
Thank you, Marnie. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Eva Labonte, Chief Human Resources Officer. And at your request, we did have the staff, including, uh, Eva Haas from Health and Human Services. Huge call out to her for the amazing work she's done on this survey. Um, wanted to put this survey together so we can ask our employees, uh, to report their COVID nineteen vaccination status. Um, their support or opposition for potentially expanding the COVID nineteen vaccination mandate to all staff. And whether or not a mandate would affect their employment with the county. This survey was anonymous, uh, and all of the questions were optional, which means sometimes you'll see that things don't add up to a hundred percent. And that's because all the questions were optional to either answer or leave blank. Um, staff were asked to indicate their department. So you'll see in this report that some of the smaller departments were aggregated. So people could maintain their anonymity in this in this report. So this is a convenience survey, which means that it's not a random sample of employees across departments. But instead it is employees who saw the email or horizons posed regarding the survey and then chose to respond. We had approximately sixty-five percent of our staff respond to this survey. And we did have at least some representation from all of our department groupings in the organization. So as you can see on the chart, we had seventy-five percent of our employees who responded. Indicate that they were fully vaccinated, sixteen percent indicated they were not vaccinated. And seven percent chose not to respond to that question. And the seventy-five percent, um, of fully vaccinated report is very similar to our report from our healthcare providers. Which is aggregated data also, and it shows that we have seventy-six point four percent of our employees as of September first. That the healthcare, uh, our insurance knows are fully vaccinated. Next slide, please. This gets into the vaccination status by department. So the county administrative office reported being fully vaccinated the most, followed closely with juvenile department and Health and Human Services. We had four departments groupings that showed a ninety percent or higher vaccination rate. We had five department groupings that showed an eighty percent or higher vaccination rate. And then our land use and transportation department has a sixty-four percent vaccination rate. And the sheriff's office rate is at fifty-nine percent. Next slide. Now we start to look into, uh, results of the questions around expanding the vaccine mandate. Overall, we had fifty-two percent of the respondents indicated their support or strongly support. Expanding the vaccine mandate. And then we also had forty-one percent indicated that they do not support or strongly do not support the the vaccine mandate. So these numbers were not universally distributed among our department groupings. Our cooperative library services, county administrative office, health and human services and juvenile departments. All indicated over seventy-five percent of the staff reporting that they were in support of the vaccine mandate expansion. And then conversely, staff from sheriff's office, land use and transportation and. Land Use and Transportation and Community Corrections indicated that their staff had less than half of, of the people reporting had support for the vaccine mandate expansion. So looking at the impact of the potential mandate on employees leaving the county. Of the people who responded, 27% agreed or strongly agreed that they would consider leaving their job if they were mandated to get the vaccine. And then on the flip side of that, we had 10% agree or strongly agree that they would consider leaving their job if the county did not mandate the vaccine. Next slide. So this indicates employees' decision to, to consider leaving the county based on department. So what you can see here is that staff responded to the survey in the Sheriff's Office and Land Use and Transportation and Support Services had the, the highest indication that they would consider leaving their position if they were required under a mandate to get vaccinated. On the other side, staff from Housing Services reported they were more likely to indicate they would consider leaving if we did not require a vaccine mandate. So what questions do you have about our survey results?
Are you able to tease out which of these positions in total? I'm not saying individuals. Are what we call frontline are required to be at the, at the county and which ones are remote? Because I'd be interested in that.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's fair to say that we have a larger representation from the Sheriff's Office and Land Use and Transportation, Community Corrections, and some in the Juvenile Departments that are required to be on site. We also have people, for example, in the DA's office and other departments, frontline desk workers that are also. So we have, we have a concentration in some of our departments, but there are staff in all departments that are required to be on site. And it would, it would have to be not anonymous to get down to the granular level like you were saying.
Okay, just kind of did to follow up and let me reiterate that so I catch it. So those who are required to be there, they can't work remote. They're saying I, I are more likely to leave if you mandate it. Those who work in office settings or can work remotely are, are more likely to leave if you say they don't have to be vaccinated. So the ones who are working remotely say, okay, everybody's vaccinated. The ones who are frontline workers who have to be there saying, if you require me to be vaccinated, I will leave. Am I, am I getting that right?
No, I'm, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. No, go ahead, please.
We, we did not ask any, any questions that would get at what you're asking. So we didn't ask what their role was. We didn't ask if they currently telecommuted or had to report and be on site, on site. So we can't, we, we wouldn't be able to answer that question with this survey result. We, we did not ask anything to get close to that question.
Thank you, Marnie. That, that explains a lot. I, I would just venture one comment and I'll stop. And that is if any business, let's take the Sheriff's Office, lost 49%. Our LUT lost 32% of the workers. We have a non-functioning department, no question in my mind. And it can't be made up, the labor force isn't big enough to, to make up for it. So I, that helps me form some thoughts. Anyway, thank you.
And it's interesting, we, we can't explain. But to me, it was interesting that the total percent of people that reported not being currently vaccinated and not intending to be vaccinated was only 16% compared to some of these numbers that say if, if we mandated it, they would consider leaving. So that's just an interesting little data point. And I, I think that, you know, we, we use the word consider leaving, which is, you know, relatively soft. Sorry, Eva, I didn't mean to.
No, no, I, I appreciate that very much, Marnie. And I think it's also important to note that this, we have 35% of our staff that did not respond to the survey.
Are there any other board commissioners, any other commissioner questions on the survey? Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
It's not, it wasn't on this survey, but it was like three slides back when you were showing all of the reasons why, just before your Mythbusters one. Yes, this one right here. So what would you say would be the top two most reasons of this? In other words, there's some of these that are kind of over a period of time, we're going to get mitigated away. Okay? And so we'd like to think that, you know, an adverse reaction, they'd say, okay, I'm looking at the statistics and I think I can risk this. I mean, nobody likes that. None of us had got vaccinated like that concept, but we did anyway. The misinformation, concerns about safety, some of those things. What, what's the top two biggest factors that we're dealing with?
So I'm, I'm not sure I can categorize them as the top two. I think that you could categorize a lot of these as misinformation. It's just the level of misinformation and how, how much sometimes that misinformation goes to a core belief. And it's really hard to change behavior if, if you're trying to change somebody's core values or core beliefs. And so I, you know, one way to look at this and, you know, one way I've thought about it, and this is not my science hat on, is there, there are a lot of, a lot of things on this list that we can really do a lot to help people overcome the misinformation, making the vaccines convenient, supporting people, having friends and family show that it's safe and effective. But there's other things that are on this list that we're probably not going to have much impact in moving people towards that behavior. I don't know if that kind of answers your question, but.
Well, it kind of reaffirms, I guess, what I was thinking along those lines. And just as a county at 76.4%, that's pretty good, I would guess. I don't know what, what we anticipated, but, you know, I'd like to see more. But 76 is, is pretty good considering, I mean, some of the counties and some of the populations around us that are considerably less than that, so. Me, I'm not giving them a free pass here, but I'd like to see more. But at the same time, I'm trying to see the good side of this.
And the other thing to consider is there are new employees who have joined the organization that were vaccinated when they started. And also the numbers from our health carriers are fully vaccinated. And there are certainly people in process. And, and so I think it's fair to say that that, that's 76.4% is probably a small, a little bit smaller than the actual number simply because of those factors.
How many new employees have we had since the end of April when general vaccinations were available? Or even you could go January 1?
We hire approximately 35 to 40 people a month. And we bring in a lot of people because we do have positions coming open, especially through COVID and just through retirements and, and things like that. So, and people who choose to leave the organization. So those, those employees, you know, certainly could be vaccinated that aren't, aren't going to be in, in our account from our, our health carriers.
So about maximum of 360?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And currently, we don't, we don't require that new hires be vaccinated, correct?
That's correct.
How many more slides do we have to go through?
Mr. Carr has a slide, I believe.
And Chair, I can go through this relatively quickly. This is the information on the federal vaccine mandate. Not much has changed since I spoke to you last week. But as you know, we have the OHA mandate, which we talked about earlier today. There's a federal mandate for employers with more than 100 employees. That'll be implemented by the Occupational Health and Safety Administration through what they call an emergency temporary standard. It, it, from everything I've read, it will probably apply to local government employees in the state of Oregon, because Oregon has a state plan for OSHA compliance that includes local government employees. There's also a federal mandate for federal contractors. We're waiting for a federal guideline on that from, from the task force on September 24th. It's not clear how it will be applied. It does, I did read that it excludes public works contracts. So federal funding that we get for that probably will not include that. But we don't, we, we will have to wait to see what, what the guidelines say. And frankly, when we get a federal contract after October 15th, if it has a requirement that our employees get vaccinated, we will have to comply to get, to take the money.
So.
I'm sorry.
When are you expecting clarity on the second bullet? The federal mandate for 100 employees? When are we going to be able to change from May apply to we know the rules or not?
Chair, I, I believe it will apply based on everything that I've read, but we won't know until they issue the ETS. There's pressure on OSHA to do that quickly. And I'm, I'm expecting it before the first week of October, but there's no guarantee.
Oh, that approximate timeframe is really what it's all about for me. It's just, I don't want to be sitting here with bated breath every single day or from week to week. So just having a stake in the ground of mid-April is just fine by me.
Everything I've read suggests that there's pressure by the administration to get, for OSHA to get it out by early October. But again, you don't, you can never tell with certain, with the federal government.
Right. Well, the stake may have to be picked up and moved further out. I can deal with that too.
And we will do our best to keep you informed.
But I'd rather have a plan than no plan. Great. Thank you. Any other slides? Nope. Okay, that's an update. I'll, I don't know. I think it's worthy of discussion. But in the interest of time, I'm just going to kick it off if you don't mind, colleagues. I'd love to see the numbers go higher. I appreciate hearing that at least 76.4% of our employees are fully vaccinated. That's good progress because when we talk about that, having achieved the 80% number, that's using the Fed and CDC counts for adults, which is only the first dose, right, Marnie? Yep, it's not fully vaccinated. Don't know where. The, when we talk about the Washington County, it's 80% of adults have had at least one dose. Yeah, yeah. So I don't know where we stand with regard to fully vaccinated, but that's okay. We don't have some number we have to hit, but the higher the better. Before, my preference as one of five, before I'm interested in considering a vaccination mandate beyond what we're already required to do, I want to know what the bloody rules are. Sorry to use flippant language, but.
Does that mean that you want to wait for the federal mandate?
Yeah, I want to wait and see what those are because otherwise, if we do something and then we have to do more work to update it based upon when we get clarity there, it just, our staff has enough to do right now. That's my preference. So I'm just kicking off the discussion.
I would say that we, we know that there is a federal mandate. We have advice from our council that, that says it most, it, he's fairly certain that it's going to include public entities. We're looking at a relatively soon timeline, especially in relationship to how long we're going to be in this pandemic. So I, I would rather, I would rather wait for clarity around the, the, the national mandate.
Any other board comments?
Yeah, I'll comment. It's, it's, thank you, Eva, for the work that you've done. I think it's important for us to know. People are more than just, you know, ticks on a sheet or numbers in, in some spreadsheet. People are people and they have different ideas. I think to the person here, we all support, you know, vaccinations. I had mine months ago, but I'm, I'm a little concerned of us moving too fast, such as me. I would hope that we would be sensitive to those who have views different than our own and that we would allocate through our funding processes enough money to test on some regular basis if people are, are opposed. I would hope that we wouldn't get into a position where we, where we really are encourage our, our employees to lie about their religious status just to, to get out of this. I would hope that they wouldn't, that they would freely feel comfortable of, of saying that. I have some objection that we look for any sort of compensating, you know, arguments that they might have, that they can be placed somewhere else. I, I guess if I'm being a little too pro employee, it's because I, I, this is not a, this is not a market that's for the employer, it's for the employee. There's options, lots and lots of options. And so I think we need to, as an employer, be cognizant at the same time in favor of the employees, we need to be sensitive to their needs and need to be concerned. And I heard the sheriff in our meeting the other day saying, you know, he wasn't supporting and it was problematic to his department. You saw what happened in LUT and these are folks who you see on the street every day. Us, you see on a screen, that's about it. So I, I know you'll be sensitive and I hope that we'll be out front with our bargaining units so that they can participate in discussions, so that they can voice whatever opinion that they have if they haven't already done that. Not that, you know, we're going to completely agree, but at least they have some heard voice other than this anonymous employee one. So that, that's my comments. I'm just concerned. We've got a lot of worried people who are disappearing out of organization because of age-related issues and other opportunities. I don't, I don't want to make this a revolving door. So that's my comments.
Any other comments for today on this?
I, I just, I, I think I agree with Commissioner Trese on this. I think we wait to see what the, the federal determination is. I don't see any reason to get ahead of that. It's frustrating to me that we can't make our own decisions in this regards. But I, I don't want us to go through the pain and agony and then the feds decide something else. So let's wait and see what, what they've got in mind.
Yep. Thanks for joining us on that. Commissioner Fai, anything you want to say today? Okay. All righty. I think that's it from us. Any other leadership updates or board contributions for today's work session? Okay, so Ms. Angie will work with her staff to see when we can get the homeless encampment program update accommodated in the rolling agenda and we'll go from there.
I can share an update. We've rescheduled that item for October 5th.
Oh, great. Terrific. Okay. Well, without any further comment, I think that's it for today's work session of September 21st. Thank you. Work session adjourned. Bye-bye.